I'd like to call this planning commission meeting to order. We are mostly present, we do have one absence thus far. However, we have established quorum. Do need to administer an oath to anyone that plans on speaking at today's meeting. All you have to do is say "I do" after I administer it. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to your best of the ability to this commission? Say "I do." Alright, thank you. We do only have the podium. We used to have spots where you could sit up front, but unfortunately, our table is shrunk or it's no longer an L. So if you are going to speak, we do need you to come up to the podium, state your name, the street that you live on. That way, we can pick you up on the microphone. Otherwise, if you're sitting out in the crowd, we don't have the capacity to pick you up. Go ahead, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to shift the lot splits forward. We have three of them and they shouldn't take long, I hope.
I agree with that, second that motion. Any discussion about that? Alright, all those in favor of moving the lot splits 1311, 1312, 1313 ahead of 1310, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. We are all present. Thank you, RJ, my apologies. We do want to look over the minutes from our last meeting real briefly. Does anyone have any objections or comments to be made?
Looks good. We accept the minutes of August 1st.
Alright, Nancy seconded that. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, accepting the minutes for the last meeting, say "aye."
Aye.
Alright, thank you, RJ. We'll move on to our cases. First case is number 1311. It is a lot split brought forth by Wells Fargo. It is at 1096 and 1098 East State Street. Mr. Paskey, would you like to, or Mr. Logue, provide us a brief summary of the lot split?
Yes, this is a lot that was a piece that was split off of the lot split we did a few years ago that currently houses John's Handyman Service. It was a remaining piece of property that is currently vacant. The applicant does request to split that parcel that's now one and that will split off the other, split that one now. About two-thirds of it going for the construction of a new building for a Wells Fargo office building, the remaining third would remain vacant. You may notice on our notes that the one property that is remaining vacant, we are requesting that the access in the future off of that will either come through the Wells Fargo property, or through the John's Handyman property, or from the rear. We were not going to allow another curb cut for that property on State Street. When this was originally split a couple of years ago, we told them they'd get one more curb cut on State Street for this property. So therefore, we were not going to allow two, in essence. I believe the applicant is here to answer that question. I think they do have arrangements made with the neighboring parties to do that if need be. But that was the only requirement that myself and Andy Stone, Director of Engineering Public Works, required of this lot split. And then I also included it in the packet, even though it's not a Title 41, the application has been made to me. The very, I think it's the last page you may have, you can see with the site plan for the proposed Wells Fargo building in the future, very near future, I believe. I believe the applicant currently is housed in the old HDL Center, that he's going to be building this to move in here as soon as he can.
Okay.
So, again, it will not be a Title 41, it's under 5,000 square feet. The permit, state approved drawings are in on my desk already. I have done my preliminary review and I don't foresee any problems. And it's scheduled to go to Shade Tree next Thursday.
So, Mr. Paskey, just a brief summary. Basically, the decision was when this lot, combined Lot A, B was made a couple of years back, that they could have one curb cut, it didn't matter where that curb cut was?
That is correct.
Just one only. Good, Mayor.
In terms of boat control, the residual lot, which is Lot B here, says 7,785 feet, square feet. What's the boat control?
There is none for commercial.
Commercial, okay. Just wanted to know, thanks.
I would like to request that because of the issues we're having on East State Street, and I'm going to talk about that even later, related to another project, we're in the process of instituting no left-hand turns unless it is at a signalized intersection, of course. So, that's something I would ask to be included on this.
Is saying, and again, that no, only one curb cut, I guess one curb cut from East State Street is permitted, and one curb cut from Cook Drive?
The vacant property, per Andy, is okay to, what would be the remaining vacant property will be okay to access from Cook Drive.
Okay.
And when we did the lot split years back, and I shouldn't say that it was guaranteed a curb cut, it was based on what was going to go in there. If it had been a high-use fast-food restaurant, it may have been a little tricky, but this is not the case. So, but even still, with that small remaining parcel there, we've requested that no curb cut off of East State Street be put into that. And the John's Handyman Service has a rather large curb cut now that could flare into that vacant property, as well as the new Wells Fargo plan, they could actually drive through theirs if they eliminated one parking space, or whatever it may be, as an access into it. So, but I believe they have arrangements made as to how they want to do that in the future, and I can let them speak to that.
John, what does the encroachment into right-of-way notation mean?
I just made a note on there to make sure, if you noticed, there's a right-of-way along the back for Cook Drive, and we wanted to make sure that the building did not encroach into that right-of-way. I spoke with the architect this morning, and he says that the building's right on the corner of it, right there. So, the property line-
So it is not encroaching-
It is not encroaching. That was a question I had when I did my notes. As you notice, the property line goes into the center line of Cook Road. So, but the right-of-way is 60 foot for Cook Road back there.
Unusual.
No, it's not.
60 foot?
Well, I mean, just owning half of a road.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, any comments or questions? Does anyone have questions or comments for the applicant specifically, or summary sufficient?
I move we approve the lot split.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion or questions?
Just that the Service Safety Director's going to write on here, no left-hand turns.
Okay. Would that be your own additional comment?
They'll have to hear you. Not entering, exiting.
Is that going, I'm Chris Garrick, by the way, 3 West Tibson Avenue, representing Mr. Carr, George, today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The, when we talk about no left-hand turns, is that going to be across the board for everyone going forward?
I'm working with the city engineer on that because of the conflicts that we're having on East State Street, something that's kind of a patch method at this point in time. So, I would like any future developments, and as we move forward, we may. If you notice now on East State Street, we've done that in a number of places, when you come out, Community Park Drive, no left-hand turn, Pinchot Lane, you know, the whole Aubreyos and, you know, area have instituted no left-hand turns. We're trying to reduce the conflict that we're having on East State Street.
Is that going to be applied uniformly for everyone that comes forward?
I'm asking for future developments, and then we didn't, we instituted those other measures already, and have the authority to do that as we go down East State Street.
Mr. Carr, George, are you okay with that as far as?
So the other tenants on that street could take a left-hand turn out of their parking lot? I would be restricted because I'm building now?
Once again, I'm working with the city engineer on instituting additional no-left-hand turns on East State Street. And so, any new development that comes before me, I don't need to introduce, you know, additional conflicts.
So, they would have the option to then not turn left and agree with you, or continue grandfathering because they built early?
No, I wouldn't say that. Once those signs are placed, they're placed, and then that becomes the rule of the law, you know, the traffic rule, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so just the additional comment to the staff or the minor subdivision review from the Service Safety Director to that no-left turn or egress on East State Street, that would only apply to East State Street, not to Cook Drive, correct?
Correct. And again, it's from the property exiting out to East State Street, it's not accessing it from East State Street.
Right. Alright, any additional comments? Alright, there's a motion, so all those in favor, say "aye," we're accepting the lot split.
Aye.
Any opposition? No abstain, okay. No one abstain?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to case number 1312. Let me get my agenda again, apologize. This is brought forth by Don Linder. It is at 63 East First Street in the Plains. It is a lot split, again, in the three-mile radius, that's why Plains jurisdiction matters to the planning commission. Mr. Paskey, again, a brief summary would be-
Yes, first of all, I believe Don left in after the swearing-in, so he might have to get him here.
Alright, we'll see if you need to speak.
Okay. This is a parcel on First Street, East First Street in the Plains. You can see by the aerial photograph in there, on the second page, I believe it is, that it's currently got a house and a couple of outbuildings with it, that they want to split off from the large property. And the residual vacant property then would be a new lot, rather large lot at that, over four acres. This property will take a variance through council because of the width-to-deep ratio on the property, so other than that, it's a pretty clear cut.
And the depth is 549 feet, and the frontage is 78?
78, correct.
And that's the issue, because the splitting off the house, the .582 acres?
Correct.
Okay.
I do believe that if there was access to come in off East First, or East First Street, the 78.46 feet is large enough to meet the county rates for a road to come in if there was to be a cul-de-sac, or subdivision, or whatever it may be, built back there.
Okay.
Or, as they've indicated, possibly a continued, you see the cul-de-sac on your left-hand side there, some of that Metropolitan Housing, where they may extend into this someday.
East Third Street.
There used to be a lot of trees. It took a duration of time.
Oh, really? Clean them out, huh?
What is the width-to-depth ratio?
One to three.
Required, you mean? Yes. Okay.
So really, we're just creating the half .582 acre lot?
Well, we'd be creating both, in essence. This allows them, I think they've been trying to sell the house, and sell the house off separately without the rest of the land, and vice versa.
Hmm. Okay. Well, comments, questions? I guess what determines the 313 feet?
Excuse me?
You mean, why the depth-
Yeah, why the arbitrary depth of that, that 313.65? Is there a pen or something that works?
What's he looking at?
He's looking at this one right here.
On the survey.
It's actually because the top of that first street is probably Trapp's Oiler, it's not a right angle.
So it's the gun with the 320?
Yeah, so you've got 320 on one side, 313 on the other side. It's not a right angle at the front part.
Okay.
And they've chopped off the 80 feet.
Although it was proposed as such, but the reality is different.
Now, yeah, if you look at this deed here, and you can see this is not the right angle.
If you wouldn't mind, I could make a couple of rotation problems.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Linder. Yeah, if you could, go up to the podium, please, so we can get you a microphone. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission to the best of your ability? Say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Don Linder, broker and owner of Larry Conrad Realty, and I'm representing, this is an estate, so it's a disposition or disposal of an estate property. And the intent here really was, they don't really want to have responsibility for the house, so, you know, just sitting empty or renting it, it's not the interest of the estate. So, we figured that, well, this would be the best approach to sell a piece of property and not leave it as a liability. It is under contract, somebody is interested in buying it, and we tried to provide a reasonable compliance to setback requirements, as you can see, there's distances in the rear and the sides, and that came into play as well in this. And there's really not too many logical other ways to split this and still include the additional buildings that are on that property, which would be the best, highest use for that particular house structure. And of course, the market has spoken, and there has been some offers on that. So, and the remainder, the owners have really no intention certainly to develop, but they're just, they'd hope to sell it, it's on the market, but they're not going to do anything with it. We have talked to the Athens Metropolitan Housing Association. If we look at that cul-de-sac, there is not a provision for a flow-through off of that cul-de-sac to have access to that property. And I believe you probably addressed that in other future proposals that come forth. So, the only way that it can connect there is with cooperation of that owner, which is Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. And we asked them if they would like to, you know, utilize that land for continuation of that project, and their board decided not to pursue that at this point in time. So, there is no pending intent on the property. It just seems to be a logical approach, and we took advice from survey or from an engineer to create this split as-is. And there are water taps on both of those properties, so there was structure, a structure trailer on the, we'll call it the residual parcel, the larger. So, and not inconsistent with the neighborhood, I guess, is the other thing, too, that if you look at the photo, there's, you know, there's apartments, and there's multifamily development there as well. Any other questions, I'm glad to answer.
So the only way in and out on this property would be off of East First Street?
That's, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
I should probably add that both parcels are going to need a variance. They're both-
Right, that's what-
A new and a residual.
And would there be space remaining between, we're looking at as far as an ingress/egress, would that be suitable for a driveway to go through there?
Yes, that's what I was stating, nearly 80 feet would meet the county requirements for a road to go in there.
I think 70 is the county, 80 is the city's requirements. Am I correct in that, John?
It depends on the use that's going in, and how many houses and such.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Alright, word of motion to accept this lot split with, I guess, the variance obviously being granted by city council, we're-
Contingent on their variance.
Passed beyond the planning commission. Any comments or questions? Alright, any second?
No second.
Okay. RJ, all those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you very much. We do have one more lot split on the agenda today. That is at 185 Columbus Road, is brought forth by Bill Walker. Mr. Paskey, are you the most knowledgeable?
Yeah, okay. This one is a situation where if you look at the flat map, or not flat map, the aerial, you can see where the commercial building in the front and two of the storage units behind it were on one parcel, and the other two storage units were on another parcel. What they're requesting to do here is basically just switch where that parcel line is, separates the four storage units from the commercial building. So the commercial building would be its own piece, and the storage units would be its own piece. So basically, just relocating that, that current line is split in those two pieces to between the commercial building and the storage buildings. You may note on the drawings, or on my notes, that by doing so, the required number of parking spaces for the commercial building on the front was 29 spaces. The front building, commercial building, has 21 spaces. Before, it wasn't an issue, and it was all under one parcel, one ownership, so to speak, because we allowed parking at the ends of the storage units to the rear, so on and so forth, where they have some dedicated parking spaces at the end of those storage buildings. Now, with two different ownerships, if it was to be sold, the storage units to be sold, the front commercial building did not, does not meet the parking requirements that it needed. So I gave them basically three options, and you can note there on my comments, that one of them was that they added more parking spaces in front of the building, but that would be into the city right-of-way, and would need a revocable license, and in light of the Columbus Road project, I didn't know if that'd be a very acceptable idea. Number two was to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a variance for not having enough parking on that front building. Or number three, which is the option they have chosen to do, is to deed restrict nine of the parking spaces that were originally attached to this in the back part, deed restricted so that the parcel, the people in the front building can use those parking spaces to the rear. And by doing so, it does meet all of our requirements, and the deed restrict is permissible. So, and the deed is attached, and they have included that language in the deed for allowing that to happen. And with that said, the existing buildings will meet all setback requirements, parking requirements, et cetera, so.
Are these parcels not continuous and contiguous?
The ones there now? No.
No, proposed?
Proposed, no. The commercial building will be separate from the four, the four storage units will be one parcel, and then the commercial building will be another. And no, they will not be held continuous and contiguous, it'll be possibly different ownership. I believe there's even a contract in the works to sell the commercial-
Which ones do you-
The storage units are being sold off to a different owner.
Where do you access the storage units?
Door lane?
Off the door, yeah, that's all, continuous curb cut, basically, off of door.
Okay, I can't tell from there.
So you're saying that deed restrict on the-
There will be, the gentleman buying the storage units will allow nine cars to park on his property, if need be, by the commercial building in the front.
It's on page two of the quitclaim deed. You can see it in bold in the center.
The intent, of course, is to paint lines and have designated spots?
Yes.
Okay.
We went out and calculated all the parking on this when that car club recently moved in there, and I think it was at one time, they were actually painted on there. You could see faint lines if somebody tried to do something, so.
Okay.
Just needs to be a little bit more re-strived, and we did talk to them about doing so.
So, I mean, the only issue you have with the deed restriction such as that is if this building gets knocked down and its parking requirement goes down, it's always forever going to have nine parking spaces associated with that.
If the, if the storage units get knocked down-
Yeah.
Were the use changes in the front? And then this says, for the benefit of granted heirs and assigns, meaning forever, even if the use changes in the front, that doesn't require that number of parking spaces?
Then they'd have to go, at that time, the deed would be, yeah, it'd all be redone, so.
Not necessarily, you've got separate owners, one guy doesn't really know.
If the person bought the commercial building and tore it down and wanted to build another building, they would see it in the deed that they have nine parking spaces. At that time, they can eliminate that, based on what the new building is.
What incentive would they have to do that, though?
They would.
They want it, they want, they'd say, right, they'd see that, oh, we're only required this many.
The risk of both property owners-
Right, exactly.
-or the current property owner to do so.
Right.
You can, the nine, the nine deed-restricted parking spaces plus the 20 or 21?
Twenty-one.
If there's a new commercial project built, based on its use, that may not even be enough parking spaces, they may need a variance or to come back anyway, so.
Right.
If it meets the current requirements for that, the uses in that structure, am I right?
Yes, and I mean, we can change the language, so it states as long as that building exists.
Well, again, it may not be the building, it's whatever use.
It's a commercial use, I mean, that use. As long as that building's there, then by having them nine spaces, that building will have required a number of parking, no matter what's in that building.
Because of the footprint of the building.
Because of the footprint of the building, correct.
The requirements are, you know.
So it's not the use?
Well, if they came in there and wanted to put in, make the whole building a bar, then they'd have to get a use permit from us, and we would deny it because they would have inadequate parking, even with those nine. They wouldn't have enough.
I guess, I thought Nicholas and I were talking about the opposite effect might occur.
A shrinking of the size?
Right.
Yeah. Like a small real estate office that'll-
They still get the parking spaces. We don't have any, there's no requirement that you, you're not, you're allowed to exceed the parking requirements, and so this would just be a situation where 15 parking spaces are required, but you have 29, so, right?
Right, I mean, I think-
We have that all over the city.
I think this is a problem that's beyond this lot split, but the issue where we have parking off-site, and what happens, you know, the parking, if it gets purchased by someone else, it's deed-restricted, but then it's deed-restricted for use, and then that use changes, and then we forever have this deed, you know, deed because, you know, it's changed handsome many times, no one quite understands what that parking deed restriction was for, and, you know, it would be up to that person to come back to the commission or to your office and try to start tracing everything.
I can only think of one time that's happened, so.
Okay. Right, that's the thing, only one time did that happen. All these other times, it's just forever, we don't know.
And we denied it because it wasn't there, and that happened in 1979, and we caught it, so. To say that it's not noticed or not caught, it's in the deed, so when a deed comes to us, we catch it. That's part of the requirements of the application.
And I believe you do catch it, I'm just saying, what happens to somebody, somebody else? I mean, is it deed, is it deed-restricted on the first property as well, that they have-
Yes, if you look at both deeds, both parcels will have a note, one's allowed it and the other has to give it up, basically. In bold print for both of them.
Okay.
Trying to find the other deed.
General warranty, one of the last part.
I see it.
You've got a quitclaim, and then you have another deed.
Oh, the general one, okay.
I guess we're just saying in the future, if uses change or what have you, and then this is going in perpetuity with the land.
But again, we'll, every time there's a change of use, this will be reviewed in terms of parking capacity. I mean, so, whether it shrinks or gets a bigger footprint. I mean, if somebody says, I want to put, as you say, a bar in there, or a breakfast or something like that, the restrictions would come into play.
Our code allows for deed-restricted parking on this manner, so that's-
Address change, it's, with the last lot split, we talked about that at great length, not today, but taking a Muggin Road one. The storage units would all go to Door Lane, so we'd have to get a new address for that since they have no longer any East State Street access. We're Columbus Road, I apologize.
For physical purposes, they already have one at 185 Columbus Road, it has a Columbus Road address.
The entire property?
The entire property has multiple addresses for the commercial building, from 187 to 199. Each unit has its own, there's nine units in that commercial building, and each unit has its own address.
Okay, so 185 covers both parcels right now. That, we're just shifting the line to the west, close to Columbus Road, and that 185 will retain that address for all four storage buildings, correct?
If we want to, I'll think about that one, whether we want to, I might talk to 911 about that, if they want to have a Door Lane address.
Because, well, it was never contiguous before, they were always separate parcels, and they still both had Columbus Road addresses.
Technically, it probably should have had a Door Lane address before, so.
But people want that commercial road address, believe me.
Call it Columbus Door Lane.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
I move we accept the lot split as submitted with the restricted parking, the restrictions.
I will second that motion. Any- Any further discussion, comments, questions? All right, all those in favor of the lot split on Columbus Road, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Nope.
Or, sorry, excuse me. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, that concludes our lot split discussions. Now we'll move on to a Title 41 review. This is brought forth by Fairfield Inn and Suites, this case is 1310, and they're represented by Jack Bordle. This is on East State Street, I believe there's no address for this parcel, is that correct?
It will be 924 if approved.
Okay, I see that. All right, there has been a staff report that has been graciously put together by John Paskey, if you would also lead us in a review of the main items that we reviewed with Title 41, I appreciate it.
Okay. We, as you remember, had an introduction or preliminary preview of this a few, sometime back. This is a site that's located, it's on two parcels, it's between the McDonald's would be just to the west of it, and a Gomar gas station to the east of it, and it's a T-shaped property that goes between them, and behind the, next to the Gomar, there is a Wendy's, and behind that's where the Strip Center, where Aldi's is based out of, and then on the other side, behind the McDonald's is where the Coad building is located. A lot split of approximately one acre will be required from Coad as well to accommodate their parking requirements. This is zone B3, and then as you can see, a traffic impact analysis was executed by McBoy Engineering that I did forward to you, it's rather lengthy, it's 30-some pages long, but you can see their conclusion there that it was a non-impact. I'm gonna leave that up to you guys to discuss. Across the street is Walmarts and their parking lot. Again, before, I'm trying to think, you've been in here since, yes, you have been, I was trying to remember if he came in here before or after his BZA request. The proposals for a 47,610 square foot hotel operated by Fairfield Inn and Suites, it is three stories in height, and with 89 guest rooms, it is in a B3, as I said, and is permissible by our code. It meets all setback requirements of front, side, et cetera. The height is three stories, which is acceptable, it's 44 feet in height to the tallest point, the majority of it's actually less than that, which three and a half stories and 45 feet in height is permissible by our code. Lot coverage is non-applicable. Parking is one per two, or guest rooms is what's required, so they have 89 rooms, so 45 parking spaces are required, and they have plus 90. Bicycle rack is included to the rear by the dumpster, the dumpster is at the northwest corner building with proper screening. They will go before the Shade Tree Commission next Thursday, the 22nd. I calculated about 56 trees are required, they show 47 on the site plan excluding the hillside behind them, so I'll let that be determined with Shade Tree. Lighting, the parking lot lighting plan has been submitted, it shows just outside of the parking, or the property perimeter is down, reduction down to zero-foot candles. Athens Fire Department comments were that the access was very tight, being at the T-shaped drive, and you'll notice in the packets I gave you, I met with Chief Troxel, and one of the things he requested was that the front of the building, the packet had stapled together, you'll see where there's some parking spaces dead center as you come in the driveway, and then there's a free piece of paper that's not stapled to it, it says revised, site plan or revised fire. We, with, meeting with Mr. Chief Troxel, took those parking spaces out so that the truck could come straight in and turn left or right so they get their ladder truck up in front of the building.
Which is the revised one, I apologize for...
The revised one that says revised, it's the single page.
Oh, a separate page.
I just got that right before the meeting, so that's why I...
So they took out four of the seven?
Took out four of the seven, or five of the seven parking spaces, right there, dead center, as you come in, so that, so that they can get in and go left or right of the front canopy to get their ladder truck up next to the building if they need be.
I also see there's a geotechnical soil...
There was a geotechnical soils report submitted in the packet I sent to you, I didn't print that out because it's that big.
It's about 40 pages, 44 pages, I think, I noticed.
Yeah. All other comments by the chief, he noticed two hydrants, need two hydrants, he just didn't catch a couple, there are three hydrants around the building, so that, I don't know, I pointed that out to him, he was okay. All the other items he pointed out are typical lockbox, enunciator panel, et cetera. Police, the police department did not have any comments submitted to me, although I'd have talked to the police chief. Again, he, as Paula discussed a little bit ago, has concerns about the number of curb cuts on East State Street. A recommendation would be that maybe no left-hand turns are allowed, not allowed out of this. There's one other, no. And then Paul didn't have any comments, and Andy's comments are attached on the second page here, many of these have already been addressed, the stormwater calculations that he wanted were submitted, and he just didn't see them, so that is, that has been done. The ADA curb ramps and so on and so forth, all this information that Andy commented on here, he has spoke with Brian Buckley, and I believe Ryan's here, he can comment on that, right, and revised drawings here, I believe these have all been taken care of, so.
Okay.
I believe that is it, if you have any further questions for me.
I do on this, the Coad parcel is going to require an additional lot split?
Yes, they will have to, they'll have to get a survey and come in here after, if they get their approval today, then they're gonna have to submit for a lot split and get approval for that. Well, now you know what, they may, no, it'll be held continuous and contiguous, so they won't have to get any approval through planning commission, but they will have to get the survey done and so on and so forth, and then it'll go through our in-house policy, but we'll, we'll do that.
The Coad parcel will be attached to this Zano parcel?
I'm sorry?
The Coad parcel will be attached to the Zano parcel?
Fairfield.
Correct?
Fairfield. Coad would be attached to this, right?
Yes.
So the, the additional parking would still be owned by Coad?
No.
No.
No, he'd be buying that piece of property, so it would be owned by the hotel.
So that'd be a lot split.
Not deed restricted, it'll be a lot split.
That's a lot, but then this is...
But since the parcel will be held continuous and contiguous with the hotel, will not require planning commission approval, so.
So it's not a standalone, so it's not, you know, it'll be...
It's not a standalone landlocked parcel.
Right.
Which we couldn't create.
I will have the fire chief look to make sure that this access does meet what he wants, he's not in today. I did go to lunch with him yesterday, and we talked about this, and I forwarded the information over to them, and they changed it this morning, that's why you got it. He has not had a chance to review to make sure this worked, but this is what we talked about yesterday, so.
Looking at the, the map that you have up there on the screen, Paul, it appears, and again, I'm trying to just eyeball it, looking at the drawing here, that shows the building footprints, I believe it's the best one that kind of shows that. It's probably, looks like sheet five in the packet, it's labeled sheet number five, shows the Athens Shopping Plaza, and you can see the footprint of it. It, it almost appears that the parking lot, the additional parking lot of the lot that's gonna be split from Coad's property and held contiguous by the Fairfield Inn, that the parking almost is gonna, like, should they connect? They don't look, I mean, it seems like they're gonna run right into each other. It's hard to see without seeing their parking.
The Coad parking lot and the hotel proposed parking lot to the, to the west.
Yeah.
That diagonal line, if you look at the very first page...
That's basically paralleling their parking.
If you look at the revised drawing, the single page, you can see where the dotted line at the edge of their parking lot is on that drawing.
Oh, that's what that, okay, got it.
His concern is that it'll be people going through back and forth through the parking lot, is that what you're...
No, it's not coming, the parking lot for Coad, they're not going to be connected.
No, no.
That's why I was trying to figure out if they are or not.
It'll be tight, but it won't be connected.
Okay.
It's actually closer on the other side from the Aldi's parking lot, would be.
Okay, yeah.
And I was, at one point, I was looking at the elevations that were cited here, so the front elevation, if I can read the squinty writing, is right at East State Street's 632, and the back end's like 655, so it's, it's about 20-foot elevation from the top to the bottom. But most of it, let's see, at the front of the hotel is 640, so about eight feet from the drive, from East State to the front of the place, and then the rest is going to the back. It's quite a distance back, I see as RV parking, that highest zone. So it's not climbing up the hill?
No, there will be a little bit of cutting accordingly into the toe of the hill, that's why the geotechnical report was done, and when they do get their permits or whatever, then they will be required to do the land development permits, and will attach that geotechnical report with it.
Okay.
But it does appear rather limited to about the bottom, if I'm looking at the topo.
Yeah, it climbs pretty quickly afterwards.
Yeah, it looks like the, it bottoms out at, what, 642, thereabout at the rear of the, you might have a larger plan, I can see this. The finished floor elevation for the hotel is 643, and it looks like the hill bottoms out at about 643. So we're talking about a seven-foot sec, height section, yeah, I think they're all the same.
Okay, so we can just grab one, is that it? You take the top one.
Got it.
I'll grab it.
I'm upside down.
This is...
So, let's see, we've got the rule here, but, was it through the feet? So there's not that much of a climb for the driveway to the back parking lot area, from the front of the building to the back, it's gonna be level pretty much, because I see 643, 647, it will climb 45, these are one-foot increments.
Right.
Okay. 650, curb, far curb of the RV zone would be 656.
The engineer's here, he can probably answer all these questions for you.
Okay. Well, you know, I guess I'm just, I guess the concern...
I'll speak to it.
Yeah.
Can I borrow this?
Yes.
Ryan Buckley with Buckley Group. We did the engineering on the drawings, actually. Actually, the way we have it set up, we have a 4% slope coming up the driveway to the main parking lot. Across the main parking lot, we do slope 8% across the front row parking, and then 4% up to the building. The building sits at 643 elevation, and then the parking lot towards the Coad parcel, we, the greatest slope back there is 8%, which is actually close to the back corner after you make the swing to come up to RV parking.
Okay.
But it's a general 6% slope most of the way up.
Conceptually, do you have any idea how much soil movement's gonna be?
It'll be about an export of 1,500 yards right now.
Okay, just wondering.
It's not a big deal, but on this map that you just handed us, John, it says 11 space bike rack.
The drawing, yeah, it's, I calculated where it leads, 11.45, so 11 or 12...
11 meets it, is what you're saying?
Yeah. If they need to put another loop in there, do you go down, or you're, it's 11.45 spaces is what was needed, so.
You can round down, I would say, on a, on a...
Sure, I would.
Whoever gets on a bike would have a good ride down the hill. Okay, thanks, I don't have any questions, okay, you go ahead.
I, I don't, I need to talk to RJ.
Some other things, but not...
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, RJ.
In terms of the spaces they took out with regards to fire trucks, is that still gonna be tight as far as you're going up? And, again, without comment from Chief Troxel, I don't know if the trucks would need to go around the side, ever, around the side of the building, or if they were just gonna go up front, and if they're going up front, are they turning their vehicle, or is it straight, because it still seems like it would be tight for a fire truck to make a turn in there, especially with that overhead going into the entranceway, and then also you have the two pieces of, I don't know, landscape to the side that curl out on the inside of the...
Right, technically, after meeting with them, the truck can go, it requires an 80-foot turning radius, so technically, the truck could go and make the swing around the islands, down around and come back, but we're just trying to make it supr- for an emergency situation where we didn't have to do that. So if he had to get to the west side of the building, he could go make the left-hand turn coming in and pull up at that end, on the right-hand side of the building, same thing, they can come in around that way, or even off of the Aldi parking lot.
And you're talking about going around, making the left or right-hand turn immediately upon getting up there?
Upon entering, yes, so the truck is capable of doing that, what he talked about was the, the rear end of it and the ladder swinging out over whatever might be there it may hit.
Right.
So that, and there are some trees on the shade tree thing, so that's why we went ahead and did this, or he requested to have this done. To the rear was not a concern, the building is fire suppressed, primarily the truck needs to get up so that it can hook up the Siamese hookup and go from there, I think the ladder is for, obviously, getting to the front, knocking out a window for safety purposes, so, you know, he did not need, he did not have a concern about the ladder truck getting access to all points of the building, he just wanted an access to the building somewhere, so.
When he's in a hurry.
And he's in a hurry, yep.
The ladder, it can get amazingly tight places.
They pride themselves on that, although they haven't, they haven't dinged it yet.
Because I asked him about getting out, and he said, don't worry about that, so.
Yeah. I guess getting right to the East State Street ingress egress off of that, and I don't, again, just to, since it does kind of affect this a little bit, if your policy goes forward that you want to do, somebody from, say McDonald's would still have to make, could not make a left turn anymore, right?
Out.
Yes, so they would still have to, where would people, you're saying the lights, but the light, for instance, if you're going down East State Street towards Uptown, you're going into people's property to make those turnarounds, right? Is that, is that...
You mean in terms of private, commercial development property?
Just in terms of private property that you're, you know, because you have one light at Kroger that I could see a lot of people, the people then from the gas station, from the motel, from McDonald's, all going down to the light, taking a right into the shopping center parking lot.
Since we're trying to make, you know, private property, public property by forcing all vehicles into someone else's property to make turnarounds.
McDonald's already has a no-left-hand turn sign out of theirs, they have for years because it would back up their traffic in their drive-through.
But that's a personal, that's a private decision, right?
It's a, they did it on their own, and there's a lot of, if you look, a lot of businesses down there, they'll have their own signs up, say no-left-hand turns coming out of their properties, they've already done it themselves.
But in reading the report, as far as when the survey was taken, you know, as far as the AMs, the PM is concerned, my biggest concern would be even, you know, in that situation, although that alleviates a lot of it, would still be that unfortunately, motels tend to empty between like probably, what, 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM in the morning, just to say McDonald's is packed with people going for breakfast till 10:30, you know, and then people coming in from town, maybe using the, or whatever the station is there now. So you're still, regardless of what that survey is saying, there's, you know, as far as peak times is concerned, that peak time probably is like between maybe 8:00 and 9:30 when, you know, the restaurant, McDonald's is going full swing and people are checking out of the motel. are checking out of the motel, since most people leave motels early in the morning.
No doubt. No doubt, this will have an impact, even with the traffic impact study that was done. There, you know, there is going to be increased traffic. I'm trying to reduce the conflicts that we have in place now. And I would also contend that when I go to a hotel, I leave the hotel to go out to dinner, you know, and then come back into the hotel. We're not restricting access, again, from East State Street to get in, but I, it would indeed be putting in the requirement for no-left-hand turn out. And I, you know, being from that neighborhood, having property down there, a lot of us do that anyway. There's no reason to go out there and wait, and wait, and wait, and wait to try to get across the, you know, those lanes to turn left. So, we all go on over to Euclid or wherever, where the light is.
What's, I'm trying to think of what's directly across from this. Is this the?
Walmart.
Walmart where the Walmart...
It's their...
It'd be the back, like their tire area or something?
Yeah.
I believe that is the Walmart building.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's Walmart.
The driveway would be right in there.
See, this is why, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I guess, I wonder if we do want to see parking lots connected in some capacity like you have with the Kroger and Athens Mall, Social Security, where it's contiguous.
But part of the problem with that is that, again, what happens is you'll get people cutting through the back of the parking lots. And parking lots are fairly dangerous, because a lot of people just don't look. I mean, it's low, low, you know, you know, not that low speed, because I've seen people who just book parking lots. And really, that's not the intent. Again, part of it is the success of East State Street being what it is. The traffic has increased over time. You know, we're having, we were having the same problem with assigning addresses at one point.
Right.
You know, and we've talked about access roads, of course, but, you know, the Halls Clinic being the example all the way out in anticipation of this. You know, there's not a lot of room to say, "Let's go add an access road here." The best we're trying to cobble it together is no-left-hand turns to make it work. And, to tell you the truth, I have trouble, I will admit candidly, I have trouble following those left-hand turns coming out of that, was that the Play Stop one there? It's just, you know, it's, I kind of grind my teeth and say, "Okay, I'll follow it," but, you know, it's an issue.
Yeah, and it doesn't, I don't feel like it's as burdened as, I mean, you know, I guess, if you're on the north side of the road and you can't make a left turn, you know, the further out you are on East State Street, the less that impacts you unless you're trying to get out to 50 or so. Whereas, if you're on the south side, the more that impacts you, because you're likely going into town as opposed to going out that way. So, there's a different burden depending on if you're the north or the south.
Realize, if you're on the north side and you're trying to get out of town, you can go, you know, you can go out 50 one way, or you can go out to 33 and cut through 50 either way.
Right, right.
Most areas of the south side, I believe...
Lead to a light.
Yeah, regardless of where you are in the shopping district, you, you should have access from your parking space to a traffic light to make a left turn.
Right, because they are all kind of interconnected.
And there are several already of the driveway curb cuts that have been closed off to left turns already.
Right. That's where, yeah, I mean, whether, I don't know if the owner of the property prefers that or not, but, you know, there is a big difference with having, you know, the restaurant, McDonald's, and the Go Mart in, you know, separate, with their two, you know, they have two curb cuts.
Yeah, they do.
They're small, little parcels with two curb cuts, and then we're saying a larger parcel can't even have a single curb cut into East State Street.
Hmm. Wouldn't we have topography problems if we tried linking to Coad or Aldi's on either side?
That's what I wasn't sure with the, it does, it looks like you want it at the Coad.
Light either, yeah, you're still stuck.
Right, yeah, but you're still, you can't get all the way over. So, you know, it's from what I hear from the commission, I mean, the biggest concern for most isn't a, is, it's not so much a use or operation, it's really, it has to do with the traffic impact on East State Street.
I don't know.
I guess, like the mayor stated, you know, East State Street is a successful business development corridor, so we want to continue to encourage that, but I'm also struggling with traffic issues on East State Street and the safety for the traveling public.
You really just need another couple streets in there.
Tear down the hill and put a couple streets in.
If only you could take these parking and put a, some through streets in there, it'd help you out a great deal.
Well, some of these merchants might actually like, you know, people having to turn around in their parking lot.
They might.
But at the same time, you're also talking about, you know, increased danger to pedestrians who are getting out of their cars and who are parked in there, things of that nature with people. And I, I agree that there's not that much probably involved in it in terms of, of the flow.
I mean, the first, the first public street, I think, is Townsend, after you make a right if you're trying to go left and didn't want to go through.
And those of us on Townsend go around to the next street in order to get out at a light.
Jacobson.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Don't we own that, what is it, Pinochet?
No, we do not. That's private.
That's private, really?
And, and actually, that's, you're talking about that, we've had more problems, I think, on those type streets than we have others.
And I've actually had a request from the business, a business owner there, saying, "How are you, can you please institute to stop these people who, you know, they watch near misses all day at the car lot?" So, that's up there. So, there's a no-left-hand turn sign.
Isn't there a street name there?
Yes, I don't know.
That's the city of Athens standard street sign?
Pinchot, is that what it is?
Pinchot Lane.
They might be better off just taking that out.
Yeah, I appreciate the challenge in there. I guess, I guess, my concern, as I said, would be using private property as the turnaround places for people and things of that nature.
I guess I'm not directing them where to turn around.
We can't endorse.
They can take a tour of downtown if they want to go.
Right.
If they try to get out of town, we'll scoot them out to Richland and take the whole tourist right through downtown, historic district.
All right, so going back through the staff review real quick, I mean, the biggest concerns, I mean, surprisingly, the traffic impact study is provided, but the other staff, whether it's Mr. Paskey, Mr. Logue, Chief Troxell, or Pyle, or have not brought it, or Public Works have not really brought up the traffic as being an issue. So, I think it is more Plan and Commission.
I would say the police chief indeed identified that no-left-hand turn would be appropriate at this location.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that's the case. I mean, we're relying on the impact study and the chief's comments and Andy's comments, and that's where we are, where we are with this, so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the verdict is it is going to impact traffic. It's just, is this something that is acceptable in that location? You know, I mean, I think, had a traffic study been done at the hotel development right adjacent, the 33 interchange.
Well, just, just to be clear, you said the verdict is that traffic will be impacted. The, the actual traffic impact study says development will not have an impact on the traffic flow. That's what the traffic engineer specifically states. Just to clarify that, I, I'm not disputing that there might not be, but...
I, I don't, yeah, go ahead.
We ask for professional expertise.
But did he know the policy that's emerging when he did, when he made that statement?
I do not know. I'm just saying.
I think not.
The impact study says that there will be no impact.
Okay.
I don't have, we don't, I don't have the skill to refute that. I may not believe it, but I don't have that skill.
I've seen those signs crop up, and I get annoyed, but, you know, they're there.
Right.
I follow. In this last statement, it says, "It would be beneficial to allow the hotel development to coordinate with the Huntington Realty Corporation in order to provide access to the hotel."
That's Aldi park.
What is that?
Aldi's parking lot.
However, they say the inability to finalize that access should not prevent the development. But even the comment that would be beneficial, I think, is somebody else recognizing traffic flow in there.
You know, I looked at this, that McDonald's probably, what, has more than 200 cars going in and out any given day? This is a, this is a, you know, 100 beds here. It's not like we're going to get, you know, 500 cars going in and out at a given time.
Right, right.
You know, whereas McDonald's will get 500 cars, you know, more.
Probably an hour.
An hour, okay, yeah. So, you, you know, when you start saying, who's, you know, this, this will have an impact.
Right, right. It's true.
You know, our, our requiring a left, no-left-hand turns probably is more of an impact. As you're saying, we'll have people finding workarounds in other people's property if we do, or, or going the full route, you know. I'm watching a lot of people turn that middle lane into a merging lane, which is not legal, you know. This is, this is the issue. We have a lot of people driving with various speeds and various skills.
Right.
And distractions.
And people still make left turns out of McDonald's and some of the other places, so.
This means they'll be well-sighted when we have a collision.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say, "Didn't you see the arrow in the sign?" And they'll say, "I didn't see the Indian." Is that how it goes? Isn't that the joke?
I have no comment.
Okay.
All right, so, then the verdict is that the, the traffic flow impact would be, I guess, minimal would be a better way to put that. I can't see how you could say you're adding 50 additional cars and that doesn't, it doesn't impact traffic flows.
And again, I, during, during most of the day, I, the report is probably dead right there.
Right.
It's just, what I was asking about in the survey, which I didn't, unless I overlooked it, was, you know, you're taking a, a peak time, you're talking about peak time. Well, peak time with those three stores next to each other, well, calling the motel a store, is probably just within a couple-hour period in the early morning. And, you know, after that, yeah, it's probably just business as usual.
To tell you the truth, having checked out of hotels occasionally, usually, they're not going to get everybody out in the same time, within five minutes, right?
Uh, they probably, I, I would imagine they get people out, I'm going to say, well, I'm not an expert, but I would say that when I go and stay, I tend to stay late, so I tend to see people leaving probably within about an hour of each other.
We, we do have an expert here, the gentleman owns it. Do you want to ask him?
Sure.
I don't know if he wants to address it or not. But again, the McDonald's in contrast is going to have twice as many any given minute, you know.
Right, right. And again, 50 cars over the length of a day is not, not really an impact, it's just what happens if it's all at once. I guess one of the things about the left turn that I'm wondering is if we can do it more in a design fashion as opposed to in a sign fashion?
I have troubles with that. The University Commons on Schaefer Street was designed so there were no left-hand turns.
Right.
The sign fell down many years ago. The, if you look at the teardrop arrangement there, it's very hard to make a left turn. It just makes people harder and have to swing wider out.
Right, okay. But they still, still go for it?
They still go for it. If you want to see that happening, first of all, I'd say, I'd say the sign fell down a long time ago.
Right.
They never replaced it, and the most left-hand turns are at night for some reason.
Okay.
So, to, to make it hard for somebody to turn left, if they really want to do it, they'll just have to work harder getting out into the traffic. My own, you know, view and experience anecdote.
All right, RJ, you had a question directly for the owner?
No, no, I was just making the, if, you know, they, John brought it up that he was the expert, so.
Well, in getting people out of hotels and in hotels, yes, he is.
Sure.
Right.
Other, yeah, other questions or comments? I mean, I guess, you have to be able to live with 50 cars going out in one hour possibly, but that may be the, the maximum impact at a time. All right, if there's no more comments, is there, I'd like to put forward a, a motion to recommend the title, or to accept the Title 41 Site Plan Review?
I'd say with the condition that Chief Troxell accepts this.
Well, obviously, with all the conditions listed in the staff review.
And that it meets the shade tree.
I'll second that.
Does it include then the conditions as outlined in 41, your motion, or is that understood?
That is, that would be understood, yeah. That, no, we're granting no variance.
We can't.
Yeah.
This does cover.
Right.
It covers all the, it covers all the code right now. Recommendation, of course, is a turning radius for the fire truck.
Once it gets in.
Which has already been addressed.
Yes.
But I would, I would like to state, since I don't have a review in Title 41, that the no-left...
You can just tell us when it's...
The no-left turn out of driveway will be instituted, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The chief just said may be recommended, just making that up.
I see.
And that's your recommendation?
That is. My determination.
Or your service safety part?
Right.
All right, with those conditions being met, is there a motion to second?
Hey, I'd second it.
Okay.
You made the motion?
Yes.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Does the owner want to say anything? No? Or a discussion?
Exactly.
I'm Jack Bortle, 124 Longview Heights, and the owner, the owner of the property. Speak to the two, two issues. One is a left-hand turn. We'd have no problem with installing this sign. Most of our customers have cars, they're not from Athens, they're going to get on 33 or 50, they can turn right. It's not, it's a small thing to, for us to do. We'd be happy to do that.
Appreciate that.
Secondly, we expect there to be about 60 customers on a daily basis. Typically, they've had 25 years of experience in checkouts at hotels, and you could expect probably about 15 per hour. The only times that you run into mass exodus is graduation weekend, where everybody goes to the same event. It's that way once a year. So, I don't, I don't see that the checkouts are going to be en masse. We hope we run 100%, but experience tells me we're going to run maybe 60%. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I think those are the main concerns.
Okay, thanks.
Do appreciate it. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Nancy, RJ, there, Paul? John Paskey or Mr. Logue, do you have anything to add? All right, all those in favor in accepting Title 41 Site Plan Review of 1940 East State Street, say aye.
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 Any opposition? No? So, again, it's with the conditions set forth in Title 41, plus the comments made in the staff review, with more emphasis on the no-left-hand turn as stated by Chief Pyle.
Thank you.
We do have no more cases on our agenda. We do have one communication that is for concerning development on East State Street, a Texas Roadhouse. I don't know if Mr. Paskey, do you were presenting this, or Mr. Logue, or?
Actually, the applicant for the, representative for the Texas Roadhouse is here.
Okay.
Her name is Emily Burnall. She can speak to the, and present the whole project.
All right. We thank you for your patience in seeing through a number of cases today.
Well, thank you very much for having me. One moment, I will get started. Can you, y'all hear me? Is this okay? Okay. Good morning, or good afternoon, I should say. My name is Emily Burnall. I'm with Greenberg Farrow Architecture. I'm a consultant for Texas Roadhouse Restaurants. On behalf of my client, Texas Roadhouse, I'd like to take this opportunity to present this proposal for construction of this new 6762 restaurant, to be located at 1,004 East State Street in the city of Athens. I want to provide some general company and operational information for your consideration. Just generally speaking, and first, I guess, some company background for you. Texas Roadhouse is based in Louisville, Kentucky, with more than 395 locations in 48 states. They opened their doors originally in 1993. They are famous for their hand-cut steaks, made from scratch sides, fresh-baked bread, and lively atmosphere. In 2012, they were named the top steakhouse in the nation's Restaurants News Consumer Pick Survey. In 2007 and 2008, Forbes ranked them one of the best 200 small companies. And in 2009, the company was ranked the best value by readers of Consumer Reports. Secondly, I just wanted to provide some general operational information in terms of their standards for the restaurant. Basically, this is, this concept is a full-service, sit-down restaurant, kind of casual dining concept with alcohol sales. Their menu also features an assortment of ribs, chicken, salads, hamburgers, veggies, all-you-can-eat peanuts. Their entree prices range from $8.99 to about $19.99. This new restaurant will employ a staff of approximately 150 people. That's a combination of full, full-time and part-time employees. This prototype will have 245 seats within the dining area, and the, there are 40 employees during their peak shift, which tends to be between 6:00 and 8:00 PM in the evening. The restaurant is predominantly an evening time establishment and opened for dinner. The standard hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 4:00 to 10:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, they are open for lunch and dinner, and the Saturday hours are from 11:30 to 11:00 PM, and Sunday from 11:30 to 10:00. And Sunday from 11:30 to 10:00 p.m. And I guess now, I guess at this time, I just wanted to speak specifically about the application materials that I submitted to you guys, which is just the site plan and the elevations. Specifically, starting with the elevations, what you have in front of you is just the, they're prototypical standard elevations. The exterior is comprised of brick walls.
Emily, if I may.
Yeah.
I didn't give them, I thought you guys were bringing a bigger board, so let me pass these.
Oh, I'm.
That's fine.
Just base, okay. So you don't have a site plan in sight yet.
Not, I do have.
It would show like where the existing stores entrances are.
Yeah, that's what.
16, 24,000 square feet, is that what I'm looking at?
The entrance in the rear?
60, what is it, 6,700?
6762 is the footprint of the building.
Going back to track the supply.
Yeah.
So.
So this is.
This is the west side right here.
Here's the light coming to track your supply back here.
So it's pre.
So it's kind of really landed on the farmer's market.
Right in the middle of it, on the west branch of it. I mean, I'm looking here, it's got, it's one parking worth, like, one parking row from the center entrance of the mall. And two parking rows, or rather, four parking spaces to the east of the entrance from track supply. I'll pass these things down.
What would be the number of parking required? Um. Which, it's six, so it falls under Title 41 with the size.
It's one per 200, I believe, is what code requires, so I think we're.
On that building, the entire lot, I've done a very extensive research on this.
I imagine you have.
I have the uses of every use that's in the mall, the theater, the required amount of parking spaces, and even on the vacant, I put in the maximum number required for that. This entire site with the Roadhouse would require 1,129 parking spaces. They currently have 1,272. I shouldn't say currently, they will have 1,272, even with the building there. So they are plus 160 spaces to the good.
Even after this land?
Even after this is built.
And we're not taking into consideration the movie theater parking spaces?
I am counting the movie theaters.
You are?
Yep.
And do you know if those are leased in some way already?
It's all owned by, it's all in the same ownership, and the movie theater requires 251 parking spaces for, based on one per six seats that the movie theater has. So, I mean, I've calculated this entire site as one whole thing. None of the spaces, to my knowledge, are leased out to anybody for anything. It's strictly all for the uses on this site.
I have seen the movie theater, basically, wires, put a barrier up for their parking, so.
The coffee spot on there?
Coffee spot, I think is going to disappear if I look at this.
Oh, is it on top of it?
Yeah, and the parts of the farmer's market.
Yeah.
So, as far as I know, I, you'd have to check the lease with the Athena Grant, but I thought they were, they had rights over that that they could restrict it, and I thought they did.
That may be, but even still, they have, their, that area right through there is required to have 251 parking spaces. And that, what does it note on that drawing you just gave you? It says movie theater, how many? The big drawing.
Yeah, I don't know. You got right there.
It says, has something on there.
Oh, yeah. Movie theater 243.
So.
So the movie theaters aren't added?
Actually, yeah.
That's what you're telling me, in their violation?
By eight spots, if that's what, I, I know what the occupancy is on the movie theater. We went in and checked. It says one per six. So we went in and verified how many seats were in that movie theater. And checked it out, and based on how many seats are in there, it should have 251 parking spaces.
I know I'm getting way off base, but one per six for a movie theater sounds to be like 30 years ago when mom, daddy, and the four kids were in the car.
Yeah.
Is this also, in looking at the plans, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
Your discussion, but the, there's a lot of trees being shown that aren't there. These all going to be for, to satisfy shade tree commission by?
That is going to be up to the shade tree commission next week.
Okay, so that's just not a.
And I guess just to kind of expand on that a little bit, Texas Roadhouse is leasing the land from the landowner, so we're working in conjunction with them to make sure we're meeting those minimum requirements.
Okay.
I'm a little bit thrown off by the location of the handicap parking, which is in the back. If I'm looking at the back site view here, they'd have to go all the way around the building, if that's correct?
Your front doors are on the side there, on the left-hand side, if you look at the site plan?
Oh, okay, I see.
So that's where the front doors are.
So I'm looking at, it's the, it's the western side has handicap, handicap parking, okay.
Oh, which was north?
North side.
It's the north side.
It's the north side that has the handicapped accessible parking. If this is a north area.
Okay, so what am I looking at here? This is north elevation, rear is the rear.
Correct.
And.
I think he's got the elevation.
I wouldn't go by an elevation on handicap parking. That could be just a, I'd go by the site plan.
What's the site?
Yeah.
Site plan is preliminary, it says.
It's very similar. It's just.
Spending time on.
Okay, so, if, okay.
Handicap parking here on the north and then on the west side is the.
So if I get out of a wheelchair, I'm looking at this, is that what I'm looking at? Am I wrong? Okay, this is the front of the building. This is the back of the building.
Yeah.
This is the front? This is the back?
Yeah.
Okay, the door is.
So you're, you're parked right here.
Okay, and you go around to the door to?
Right, you're seeing this door here is that door.
Would they be required to have state-approved plans that would address the handicap accessible parking locations?
We will check on that.
Okay.
I guess we're just trying to, geez.
Well, we're trying to figure it out. We just, we're saying this for the first, we've been looking at it for all six minutes.
No, I know. Well, I think part of this discussion is so that they, what we see when they come forward, everything's all here, rather than having that discussion at that meeting and saying, voting no, because they were not compliant.
When you measured the parking, did you include, were you looking at only lined parking spaces? Or were you looking at square footage areas that may not have defined parking spaces?
Do not have the northeast corner lined. We did not calculate that in when we did a, Brent has been informed, the owner, that that needs to be striped in that, right, that northwest corner. The aerials indicate, you can see where it was like that years ago, but it has since faded off, and he would have to restripe it to make sure the parking is adequate. Once he does that, it'll be okay. So am I making sense? The northwest corner behind the building. Right now, the striping has kind of faded away. Northeast or north?
Did he say northeast?
What did I say? Northeast, I'm sorry, northeast corner.
Which one do you mean?
The back.
I got the back.
The back behind Dunham's. That part, the northeast corner, is not striped. It was, you can see it here in aerials where it was, but it has since faded off. So if he goes back to what it was on the original plan, this is the original plan, and it gets striped again, it, he's more than adequate in parking.
Did you provide us the original plan?
This, this and that are pretty much same thing.
Okay.
The big one.
The big one, okay, yeah, this one.
This one doesn't have the trees on it or anything. This is one that I got a long time ago, that has the square footages of each big space inside of the mall.
When the rock slide occurred, did that not take out some parking in the back? Maybe that's where this?
No, all this is there.
No.
That, this is, that, as far as the size of this parking lot that's on this drawing, it remains, so.
A little bumpy.
A little bumpy.
Yes.
Yes.
More to see?
This would be another example of if they want a sign, they'd have to put on the existing sign, right?
They can put it on the building, and they do not have a freestanding sign request presented to us, but that is correct. It would have to go on the, if they wanted a monument sign, it would have to go on the one that's already there. Or get a variance for their own.
Okay, so the next step in this process, it sounds like, according to you, the parking's adequate.
Parking is adequate.
Footprint's adequate. Tree commission's the next hurdle. What's next?
They get through the tree commission, then the next step would then proceed with their engineering drawings to make a sufficient formal Title 41 request to the planning commission when they're ready, much like the hotel just did. And at that point, if they received their approval, they would be required to go to the state of Ohio to get their state building permits, get that, bring that back to us to verify that those plans coincide with the plans the planning commission approved, and then they would submit all their other drawings and get their use permit at that time.
No variance is required at this time that you're looking at?
No, I've.
Any word from Mr. Hayes on the relocation of the farmer's market?
Not a word from, all I've heard is.
Because I was told at one point that it would not be in conflict with the farmer's market hours, but hearing today that the Saturdays are 11:30, that would indeed be during farmer's market times.
All I've heard is just right there in front of Dunham's, to the east of it, on the same parking lot. That's all I've heard.
So shifting within the same.
Within the same, but I keep, but don't, don't, don't quote me on that. It's just whatever.
And then the other thing that we'd have to see is, you know, since we always, we look at these developments as if they're in a smaller component, so rather than looking at it, this large parcel and the requirements, we put the burden to just the development size of getting the for shade tree commission purposes, as well as bulk controls, et cetera. We basically have to define what that leasable area is.
Right. And in this case, it would pretty much be the building and the parking, the immediate parking right directly around it would suffice for the parking.
And not the drivelines?
Not the drivelines. So that being said, in that plan you have up there, the, I think the requirement's going to be 13, 15 trees, whatever it may be, and within that leased area, they would have two. So they were basically going to the shade tree, presenting that the remaining trees and more are placed elsewhere on the site, and that's up to the shade tree to.
So then that's not just the site. When you're talking to Gliss about, I'm just.
See, I think it should have, we have to make it work on the site if we're going to treat it leasable.
Okay, so if we're using the entire mall area for the tree commission requirements, what does the footprint of the mall itself require as trees?
I don't think they can get them on here. I don't know that number. I haven't calculated it out.
Because right now, we're saying, okay, the requirement is the footprint of the Roadhouse, but we're going to take those trees and distribute them over the entire mall area, if I'm looking at this schematic probably. But that says, okay, so we're, you know, the tree requirement for the mall itself has been grandfathered in or nebulous, or the back 40, I guess, is that what I'm hearing? So at that point, you know, you're now using a calculation of a location that's been grandfathered with no requirement, requirement of trees. So we're counting two different scales here, one for the leased area using the mall, and then we ignore the mall area for their requirements.
We are. That's what I've explained before, and I explained, with the parking, I look at the entire thing. With the shade tree, we try to treat each individual leased area as they come in, because in an outlot like this, much like all the buildings on East State Street, to try to get them to come into compliance, it will never happen, because the entire surface is already hard surface. You know, if they, if they tried to make.
I'll strike the trees.
What I'm getting at is if they tried to make this entire thing compliant with tree regulations, then they would have to take out parking, then the parking regulations for the structure would not work, so.
So isn't that an argument that they shouldn't be doing an expansion of non-conformity?
That's shade tree's decision, I guess, on whether they.
And I know you say it's paved, but the fact is, I look at that back parking lot, and it's ceasing to be paved in one sense.
And all to the northeast corner, yes.
Yes. So it's ripe for trees, or at least weeds, to start with, right?
And this is the, well, it looks like the property does go back much further than the parking area.
It's the cliff. Rock slide.
It just needs some top swine. All right. And any other comments?
My, again, I have been to the farmer's market where the Athena Grant has roped off their entire parking area. I was under the impression there were some kind of deed restrictions thereof, and, or leasing restrictions, I should say.
There may be, I don't know.
That is something I think we should know before we make a decision on this. If the, if the parking is one deed restricted in there, or rather, leased restricted for the Athena Grant, and it's not adequate, we need to know that. If it's not going to be part of the equation of required parking, we need to know that too, and will it fit? Does that make sense?
It does, but I mean, we're talking, what, off by eight spaces on the, on that, so, around the movie theater. And I'm saying it needs 251. They're saying it's got 243. I can actually count what it is and see what it is. But what I'm getting at is that roped-off area may be compliant. I don't know. I was looking at it as a priority.
And then it wouldn't be included in the calculation for the parking that's available for the rest of the property?
And that's fine. Either way, it would be, you know, I'd back out. Right now, I'm saying 1,121 total spaces are required. That's including 251 for the movie theater. So if I back out 250, and then I'm saying there's 1,272 parking spaces, so in either way, we're taking out 250 out of our numbers. So it's kind of relevant.
Any other questions or comments, especially while we have the representative for the applicant here?
Oh, I just wanted to ask Mr. Paskey, is this really in effect, is this an actual outlot in the sense of a separate entity? No, it's a leased space, right?
I don't think we have any true, I don't, true outlots anywhere down on East State Street.
Not even the old Big Bear site that's now the theater?
All of them, where we did the advanced auto and all those, they're not university-owned properties. I don't know what the definition would truly be of an outlot if it has its own defined parameters and property lines, or if it's an established leased line. That, none of these properties that I'm aware of on East State Street have a defined property line for an outlot, so to speak.
They're all pretty much pre-PUD, but there was something in the code. Would you say that in the law, over the long run, rather than making this poor woman stand here and participate in this discussion, do we need to do something with the code with respect to whole versus part? And, you know, if it's not a separate outlot legally, I mean, is there, do we have to ask counsel to please clarify that? Eventually, not in this case, maybe, but in future cases?
There is definitely something that needs to be looked at, as we talked about, with how we treat the measurable area. What's, do we measure the setbacks to the outlot for the perimeter, are the trees counted for that area, or the higher thing? On East State Street, do we make an entire site come in for the addition of one 6,000-square-foot building when there's a couple hundred thousand square feet there? Yeah, it probably does need to be looked at and clarified, because right now, all we've been able to do is, is try to do some beats and balances as best we can.
And it's your interpretation, right?
Go ahead, Nancy.
It was just his, it's his interpretation, current operations, right?
Right. And that's, that's how I understand. Same with shade trees, like, they're consistently, I mean, they're, at least, it sounds like they're being consistent in their application, but that's, how they do it is measured by a leasable space, so it's, it's kind of picking and choosing how would it apply. So leasable space defines the number of shade trees that are going to be required on the entire site in addition, but leasable space doesn't define bulk controls, because you don't have that road access, those sort of things.
So, you know, what we tried to do with shade tree is basically, we under, I think they understand that it's not going to come into compliance entirely, because by doing so, you would eliminate the required parking. But, but to add something where there was nothing, I think is there, the way they look at it.
We'll see it when it comes back, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments now?
I guess I would like to see, because I'm big on traffic today, even though it's within the private property, the circulation of this.
The, the claim, ingress, egress.
Yeah, are we actually losing parking spaces? And then how that works within, and I have to refer back to the other hotel up at the top of the street and how that works, or it doesn't work very well in terms of circulation flow, so.
We probably had a traffic study that said it was okay, too.
So are you more, Paul, would you be more interested in a traffic study, or is this more just seeing, when we get the plan, the sort of traffic arrows for?
No, I don't think a traffic study's needed. I'm actually still struggling over, as the mayor indicated, it's possible, do we view this as an expansion of non-
do we view this as an expansion of non-conformance, conformant uses, but... And then getting this parking issue, the numbers resolved?
It's not a non-conformity as it sits, because it was built prior to the code as it is. So, anything that was built prior to the code as it is cannot be considered a non-conformity.
Right, but say if somebody does a, a renovation of their house, in addition to it, they have to bring, they have to bring their house into conformity unless they get a variance.
Unless they get a variance, and in this case, that variance would basically be the shade tree, everything else is, and that's what they're going to do next week.
Okay.
As you currently see it, as you currently interpret the code, right?
Yep.
Uh, one, another question, does this require a liquor license, and is it under quota or off quota, do you know?
Um, it does require a liquor license, and I, they have a separate licensing paralegal that handlers, handles their alcohol licenses, and I don't recall quota or non-quota. I mean, I know that she's been actively working on it, so I can follow up with her to see.
Okay, just wondering. I, I think we're, we've got an overabundance of liquor licenses, but I know some, uh, the way the legislation's structured, that some larger restaurants and larger places aren't on quota, that's why I'm asking.
Well, and I, it's my understanding, I don't believe there is an issue, it hasn't been raised to my attention.
Okay.
So.
And you had mentioned 245 seats, what is the expectation, you'd say, on a, on a busy night, that you're, you know, at, at least at near 75% capacity, or si...
I mean, I, well, I guess it, you know, obviously depends. I mean, it depends on the time, their, their peak hours are between six and eight, is usually when they're busiest, and that could be Tuesday to Saturday. I mean, they seem to be pretty consistent with the times.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, from what this site is and how the mall is so under capacity except for on a Saturday morning, I can't see it having a meaningful impact beyond what it was already designed for.
But Nicholas, don't you think that the service safety director had a point when she talked about circulation? Because if you look at the current parking configuration, if, it certainly isn't one...
It's confusing.
You betcha, exactly right.
And I think that's why I was getting at, do we want to see a traffic study? And I think it's more, we want to understand what the anticipated flow of traffic into the roadhouse, out of the roadhouse, and that, whether that's, and I, I think it needs, to be honest, needs to be painted on the drivelanes to direct people as well.
That sounds good.
And that's, I, I think that would be something we would need to see in the site plan.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not very well organized.
I mean, we were not anticipating making many adjustments to the striping terms of, you know, the, um, the parking trees that are existing. We're trying to make a seamless transition and not disrupting the access and drives and circulation. I mean, also, too, we're not making any changes or modifications to the existing access points there.
I think the biggest issue I have is that from, and I understand this is preliminary, the map that we're seeing, it doesn't seem like you can access the roadhouse from the light entrance without cutting through the non-leasable space mall area. So you can't make a right-hand turn to get to it, because you've got a tree here, so you've gone all the way up to Tractor Supply, you're making a right-hand turn, you're skipping the first parking area, you're going to down the second parking lane aisle to access it. And then, I, I guess, so it would be this middle axis would, looks like the primary entrance to roadhouse. And that's what's just not clear, maybe that's not the intention.
I mean, I, we are, our intentions with this preliminary plan are just really to match what's out there currently, and so...
Right, and I don't know if the burden is on the Texas Roadhouse so much as it's on the owner of the property.
And I, I would, it is a little confusing when you're even driving out there now, I mean, because I, I would agree with that, so, and that is a discussion we can have, because with him, as he is our landlord, I mean, and again, we have our contractual restrictions, what we can and can't do, and certainly, we don't have the ability to do much outside of what we are leasing.
Mr. Paskey, Mr. Logan, any other additional comments, questions?
Just if you had any more to say, she did fly into Chicago to talk to you, so, if she was done or not.
I mean, I, I'm, honestly, it's more or less, unless you guys have some additional questions. I was just going to walk you through the elevations, and I apologize, I would have, would have brought boards, but I thought you had, um, the handouts of the elevations.
That's, that's quite all right.
I have to assume it all configured with our code, the elevations and the size.
Correct, I mean, essentially, that, what, I guess I can, I can pick up with my presentation, I mean, I just have just a couple more comments. But essentially, the, the elevations that you're looking at are their prototype. I mean, it consists and is comprised of the brick wainsco, the pre-stained cedar, and the metal roof, green trim. The dumpster enclosure is actually constructed of split, split-face CMU walls with the black metal gates. And then, just in general, generally speaking, the building height itself is 27 feet 6 inches to the top of the towers. And as part of their brand and image, as you'll notice on those elevations, they do have two flags that they fly that are mounted to the top of their towers. One is the US flag, and the other is the Texas state flag. And the flag poles themselves are actually 12 feet in height. Of course, both are appropriately lit per federal regulations to fly the flags at night, but I wanted to...
Can we actually fly a Texas flag in Ohio, legally?
You, you have elsewhere, I believe, if, you know, at other locations.
Well, just wondering, I, did somebody think we're Texas now?
Um, but, but essentially, that is their, their prototypical elevations. And then, just really briefly, and the signage, for purposes of our discussions, I know we talked about the front and the, the rear elevations. The larger wall sign there is really, for purposes of the elevations, is to more or less show the location of where it's going to be. The front to Texas Roadhouse is actually the front that will be facing East State Street, so that's where the large wall sign will be. They do have a smaller little sign that's over their front doors, and signs are designed per code regulations, but really, all they are anticipating having here are two, two wall signs. So, I guess then, lastly, just briefly about the site plan, and other than, it's just the 67, 62 square-foot building. Obviously, the placement, as you can see, is within the parking field of the existing mall. And I kind of already commented on this, but we're not proposing to make any changes or modification to the existing access points.
I see on this little sketch here, I think I'm reading a proposed concrete patio area, is that outdoor?
It's technically outdoor waiting for patrons that are waiting for tables.
It's not serving out there.
They don't serve, no.
I will let you know that there's concern about the, and pinching on the farmer's market, that this could occur. And, uh, it's been noted before, any type of thing that gets in the way of the farmer's market actually can stir people up.
But at the same time, you know, I think most malls have gone to this type of scenario, where, you know, you're, you're putting a restaurant out in an area like this to, to help to continue to draw into the, to the mall itself. You know, I, I think that's something that I've heard people talk about, you know, just casually over the years, is, you know, at some point, the, it would make sense for the mall to, to have a restaurant that would, you know, be out in that area, that would, that would draw additional traffic in. If you go, I mean, for instance, like with the, the Parkersburg, the mall over there, the Grand Central, you know, they've gone to that with like the Steak, the Steak and Shake, or whatever it is, and some other places that, you know, again, just continue to draw people in to the mall in general.
I thought you were talking about Pizza Hut and Abreos and Ponderosa.
Pizza Hut's gone, well, the outlying lot, Pizza Hut's gone, it's inside now.
Okay. Because it was so successful.
All right, any other comments?
Very quick question, is this a single expansion or so generalized? I mean, without giving away any trade secrets, are there several current expansions within the United States of this particular restaurant?
There are, yes, they, they look nationally.
How, approximately how many in this year?
Roughly between 25 and 30.
Okay.
So, I mean, they have had some other openings, or will have openings elsewhere in the state of Ohio.
25 or 30 in Ohio?
Nationally.
Nationally, thank you.
You said there's 300, almost 400 right now, so we're talking about a little bit under 10% growth. Now you know what to invest in.
Insider trading.
What?
Insider trading.
I'm a vegetarian.
Everybody else knows about it right now.
I'm a vegetarian.
All right, any other comments, questions, again, for anyone? All right, any questions from anyone in attendance? Okay, I do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We would probably expect to see this in the coming months as a, as a case. I don't see it needing, requiring to come back for communications unless there's a major change in execution or status on the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Coming out and speaking.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't have any other communications on the agenda, except for one from Mr. Paskey.
Is there a chance that, can we reconsider the meetings being moved back to Wednesdays? Starting on the second or third Thursdays of next month, I will not be able to attend for nearly a year on that given date, so.
We have enrolled John in Leadership Athens County, and they may meet on Thursdays.
I am, I am still unable to switch to a Wednesday time unless it were late, later in the day. And I don't know if we could, you know, want to do that, or, so it's all day Thursday, I don't know if Tuesday, or Monday, we'd already discussed that there's already other conflicts.
Well, could we send around amongst ourselves some possible dates and days of the week in time?
Sure, if you could send us when the con, or, either when the conflicts are, or when the openings are, just one of those, so we can know what we're trying to hit into. I, I appreciate that.
Yes.
When, when is that beginning?
The next meeting would be okay, it'd be the second meeting in September, and then pretty much...
You'd miss one every month.
Through, almost till May. I think out of this 10 months, I'd miss seven months out of the 10.
All right, well, you are a resource, resource and a vital part of this commission, so we, we would not want to do without you, of course.
On the other hand, I'd rather make sure it accommodates you as citizens more, I mean, we can always have...
Yeah, we get paid. Deciders, so.
We can do, you know, so as much as John's important, the fact is, we're talking about just seven meetings total.
Are you important?
Every other planning mission.
Okay.
That's what we talk about for each month.
Well, let's take a look and see if we can make some happen, and if not, we'll just rough it out, okay?
Okay.
Maybe we can, um, we can always tape your comments ahead of time, then air them.
Skype you from someplace.
Yeah, you can even prepare responses ahead of time to the questions that we're likely to ask.
I'd have to watch it live and then be texting as, we've done that before.
All right, any other communications?
Uh, did you get this electronically, or are these things, can you forward them to us?
The smaller ones I've gotten electronically, yes, and I can do that.
Just to see what's going on.
The larger ones, I'm sure I can, because they were done by RVC locally, so. And he brought that in to me at 11:45.
And I know it's preliminary, but just so we have something to think about.
It's helpful, I mean, I think a lot of the conversation revolved around that aspect of it, rather than what the prototype was. We do have reports from city planner and director of enforcement, something agenda, John, I'm going to give you a brief respite, if you don't mind. Mr. Logan, did you have any items to report? You did a great job with the...
I don't have any, no, you got, you got to put in plenty of time this evening, or this afternoon. Well, one, just a comment, you could potentially, if, if cases are being reviewed while John's during Leadership Athens, we could potentially only put cases on the Thursday that John will not be at Leadership Athens, and then Thursday where John can't make it could just be for communications and discussions. That might be an easy way to keep it moving forward.
That might be easier. I mean, we can take that approach even for now, and then see if we need to adjust if we're getting cases coming too many, or in its burden to, then we can make that decision.
That should work in most situations, I would...
Yeah, that's a good proposal, thank you. See?
I don't have anything else.
Any questions about that proposal? All right, thank you. Uh, John, did you have any...
I do not. Uh, BZA meeting the other night, we'll add one case, and it was tabled, because the applicant did not show up, and I, it was for a garage with the coverage and rear yard setback. I think it was 97 South May, I want to say was the address. But other than that, um, I spent the last two weeks trying to prepare all this for you, so.
All right, appreciate it. Anything else, questions? We probably asked you too many questions today to fill the next month. Opportunities for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda, if only that, that other guy would have just held out a little bit longer there.
Is it Parker?
I don't know, I kept the farmer's market.
Oh, right.
Farmer's market, yeah.
Yeah.
Next meeting's the 5th?
Yeah, 5th September, any other business or announcements? Agenda-wise, next week, any cases coming up?
It's like, there's something, I can't think of what it is. I know somebody, I told him...
Was it Mr. Love doll's lots, or something?
No, his is okay.
Oh, that's right.
Stay tuned.
I, I believe it was just a lots split or something, it's not a case, I meant a Title 41 or anything.
All right, I'll work with Sharon, get the agenda put together there for the next meeting. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. I thank you all for participating today.